The April 28th, 2025 regular city council meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, I kindly ask all council members to please put away cell phones. If you need to conduct personal business during the meeting, please make a motion for a recess. For those participating by phone, please ensure your phone is muted unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please remember to state your name for the benefit of those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The cameras located at the back of the council chambers above the clock. Our meetings are governed by Robert's Rules of Order in accordance with Wasilla Municipal Code 2.04.090. In order to maintain an orderly and respectful discussion, I respectfully request the council to observe the following guidelines. Please seek recognition before speaking. No member may speak more than twice on the same motion without an affirmative vote to suspend the rules. No member may speak a second time on a matter until all others wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so. These rules are in place to ensure that everyone's right to speak is respected and to prevent any one voice from dominating the discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Pottle?
Here.
Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Belloc?
Here.
Councilmember Rubiel?
Here.
You do have a call, Madam Mayor. All members are present with us in chambers. Council seat C is currently vacant.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge and Mr. Graham, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented unless objection is raised.
Madam Mayor. Well, disregard, sorry.
We are on to special orders of the day. It is the proclamation that I will read. City of Wasilla proclamation recognizing the 56th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of our local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishment of the office of the professional clerk. Now therefore, I, Lyndon D. Ledford, Mayor for the City of Wasilla, recognize the week of May 4th through the 10th, 2025, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Jamie Newman, MMC, Sarah Standifer, MMC, Crystal Nguyen, Administrative Aid to the City Clerk, and all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Sarah?
Yes.
We appreciate you guys keeping us out of jail. It's always a good thing. We are now on to commission and agency reports. Airport Advisory Commission Director Shaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 14th, which was last Thursday, we had a advisory commission meeting for the airport. We had three topics and new business. They were just informational, so there was no actions taken. We looked at the airport's budget, which is the same budget in your budget book, and talked about the what we've proposed to the council this year. We talked about the Taxiway Kila project and how the FAA is very supportive of that project in one phase instead of breaking it up as we planned, so they were very excited about that. And we also talked about summer operations, mostly what they can expect out there in our spring cleanup. We had three members of the public attend, but there were no public comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will now hear from the HDL Engineering Consultant on the Wasilla-Palmer Water Interconnect Project.
Madam Mayor, if I may introduce them as they walk up. So tonight, we have with us Chris Bowman, who is the Water-Wastewater Department Manager for HDL. And joining him is Lian Kopzak, who is a water and wastewater engineer, and also the oldest son of Lance Kopzak, who is our wastewater lead down at sewer treatment plant, who retires this Wednesday. They're going to be presenting to you tonight on the Water Interconnect Project and giving you some insight into the immediate upgrades it's providing our system and the long-term planning that it's providing for the future connection to Palmer.
Good evening. We have some slides to present, and I'm not sure how to get it up there.
Crystal, will you have you?
Thank you.
So while she's getting that up, thank you, Eric, for the introduction. My name's Chris Bowman, this is Lian Kopzak, and we're here to discuss the Palmer-Wasilla or Wasilla-Palmer Interconnect Project. So a little background on the project. We wanted to just kind of go over how we got to even discussing this sort of thing. Everything sort of stems from a law that was passed in 2018 called, there we go, the Americas Water Infrastructure Act. It was signed into law in 2018 and required communities of over 3,300 people to develop and update a risk and resiliency assessment and emergency response plan. So the purpose of this plan was to evaluate potential threats to water systems and identify those threats that pose a significant risk. This mostly happened in 2021, which also coincided with a very heavy wind event. It caused pretty significant damage across the valley. Three reservoirs all lost insulation. Wasilla had one of their pressure booster stations freeze and cause all sorts of havoc. So going hand in hand with that, we had a lot of experience with emergency and emergency response, and that helped with development of plans. HDL wasn't involved with the development of Wasilla's plan, but we did do several for other communities of similar size. So as you can see on the figure that Lian's showing, Palmer and Wasilla have, they're growing towards each other. Their water systems are growing towards each other, and they actually have utility service boundaries that abut each other near Trunk Road. Wasilla has facilities that extend outside of city limits to serve customers within that utility service area, such as the Ranch subdivision. And Palmer Water System extends out to Matsu College via Trunk Road and hits the hospital on the way. This results in both water systems being just a few miles apart from each other. And all of these expansions are in accordance with master plans that have been developed as the system has grown. Wasilla's was adopted by the city and reviewed by the council in early 2000. Palmer's master plan, while not anything officially written down, has been developed really with the hospital and the hospital utility extension also in the early 2000s. So as a result of this infrastructure act and the emergency response plan, just looking at the map in general, Wasilla and Palmer came together after the windstorm, and they said, what would happen if we connected? So each entity contributed $5,000 to perform a high-level engineering analysis to look at the feasibility of connecting the systems together. The primary goals of that study, which was developed in 2022, was to boost system resiliency for both systems and allow for the potential of future free flow of drinking water between the systems in case of a catastrophic failure of certain components in the system. It would also have the secondary effects of increasing fire flow along that corridor. It would open up additional land in the Matsu Barrow core area for denser development, housing, commercial development. It would connect large-scale users such as schools and fire stations, other users along that corridor, just to spur development. So we looked at two potential pipeline alignments. They're depicted in red. It's easier to see the north alignment, which was Alternative 1. It followed Bogard-Selden corridor, eventually connecting into Wasilla's water system at the Spruce Reservoir, which is the highest point in the system. And we looked at a southern route, which followed Trunk Road and connected on Old Matanuska via Fairview Loop. That northern route would require about 44,000 feet of pipeline, and in 2022 was estimated at about $32 million. That southern route, a lot shorter, but it required much more kind of ancillary infrastructure. It was 14,000 feet long and about $15 million. As a result of this $10,000 study, Wasilla leveraged that into a grant in 2024 and released a competitive RFP. That grant was for engineering costs associated with the project. HDL was selected to provide services under that RFP to study this further and perform engineering services related to an interconnect project. At the same time, there was a grant, $2.1 million, that was received. That was for design and construction of the old Matanuska Booster Station and PRV that was identified in the feasibility study. HDL teamed with a contractor under a progressive design-build method. That contractor, Tuck LLC. We were selected under that contract as well to, they're not 100% related, but they are in that, the projects that would be under that progressive design-build would go to support the overall interconnect project. So now we're here. That was a long-winded discussion about all of that, and now Lian is going to talk about what's actually been done under this project so far.
Good evening. My name is Lian Kopzak. As Chris mentioned, I'm one of the engineers working on these projects. And if you're following along on page seven with the talking points, I'm going to cover items three and four, which is simply just summarizing our project progress. As Chris mentioned, there are two main alternatives in the feasibility study. However, these are just concepts and need to be analyzed further. One tool we're going to be using is software modeling. We want to analyze a combined system because before we begin designing that system, we need to know how each system works and how they'll work together. And of course, that means we need to understand how the City of Wasilla's system works before we can analyze an interconnected system. If you want to, Chris, scroll down to page nine. I won't spend too much time on this figure because I know it's been presented already. This is an excerpt from our functional narrative, which was step one in trying to understand the City of Wasilla's system. This is a hydraulic profile of the city system. And like I said, it's just an excerpt. There's a few more pages that talk about system history. But mainly, it is to say, here is the existing system, and here is how it works. And this is going to be a design reference that we use moving forward. And it's also met a lot of short-term needs for the city in that now everything about the system is summarized in one location and easily accessible.
Madam Mayor, so our Public Works Director's been talking a lot about our water system and has it color-coded by age. This doesn't, this color code doesn't have anything to do with age. It just has to do with pieces of the system. Is that correct?
That is correct. This color code has nothing to do with the age. However, I am going to hit on a figure that does have to do with age.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next two figures are snapshots of something I'm really excited about. This is an online GIS database that we've compiled and are currently refining. This is a snapshot of right out here at the corner near City Hall. And the best way to understand how this works, I would say, is for those who've used the MSB Parcel Viewer. When you're, it's an interactive map, and you're scrolling around, and you want to have information about a parcel, you click on the parcel. All the information comes up. This works very similarly in that city operator may want to know, what does that occur in an intersection? They'll be able to pull up on their laptop tablet the map, scroll to the site, and click on an asset, whether it's a node or a segment of main. And what we've done to date is we've digitized all the available record drawings that City of Wasilla has for water distribution and water storage infrastructure. We've translated that to this GIS database and then translated any information we can into those attribute tables, which are shown on the left and on the right, so that if you click on a segment of main, you can see what size it is, what year it was installed, and you're also able to see what record drawing sets go with that asset. What we're going to be doing to refine this is this summer, we have a crew that will be going out and taking these nodes and moving them to within two-centimeter accuracy to where they actually are. This is going to help serve short-term needs for the city in that if there's a valve that's missing or buried or paved over, we'll be able to identify that. But it's also going to help work towards the model that I previously mentioned. So Chris, if you want to scroll down to the next one, please. Here's more of an overall view of that database with the current extents that match up with the pressure zones from that functional narrative excerpt. And if you're following along on page 12, this is a digital water model that we've created of Wasilla's Zone 4. That is the green zone in that functional narrative map. Chris, Chris mentioned that there is a sister project to this, and I'm going to touch on it a little more later, the progressive design-build project. What that progressive design-build project subject was is the Old Matanuska Zone, which is, that connection point is right here on this Richmond Zone. All the water along the Alternative 2 route needs to pass through the Richmond Pressure Zone. So we've started our efforts there with the other project in mind so that we can understand how the system works in that area. Yes, here's the Pipe Age Dashboard. On the right side of this figure, you're able to see a pie chart that has summarized all the distribution man in the City of Wasilla into ages. You'll notice there is a section of unknown, but that's only 13.7%. And that's actually really good coverage considering how old the city system is. And then on the left is just a little snapshot of one section of the city with that color code showing the age. During the initial efforts to model the Richmond Zone, it greatly informed the direction of the progressive design-build project. As was initially listed in that RFP was the Old Matanuska PRV. And that really high-level concept said, hey, Alternative 2, it's going to generally come along this corridor. It could connect here. As a result of these initial efforts, we've realized that the Richmond Zone is already riding a fine line and that there is additional storage needed there. And the next figure, probably my favorite figure in this whole one, just because I'm an engineer, but in the bottom-left corner, you will see the highest asset there. It's a proposed reservoir in the Richmond Zone. That does not exist. And if we have the Alternative 2 connection come along that general corridor, regardless of if it connects in Pressure Zone 5 or Pressure Zone 4, with no storage in Zone 4, that interconnection is not a resilient asset. It's not going to serve the purposes of Wasilla nor Palmer. And this just highlights the fact that these efforts are highlighting some projects that were identified in the master plan, some projects that weren't identified in the master plan, but projects that are really needed right now and that ultimately serve the goal of the interconnect. And as a result of these efforts, we've worked with the city in the borough to re-scope that progressive design-build project to Zone 4 infrastructure upgrades and preliminarily have chosen a reservoir in Zone 4 for that upgrade. There was a memo we prepared and have submitted to the city, and it was shared with the borough, and it provides more detail on how that process was undertaken. And I won't spend too much time on this last figure, but it is modeling efforts that were done with a Zone 4 storage reservoir. And what I'll say is that we needed to do all the preliminary investigation of digitizing record drawings, putting it into a GIS database to really get this information out of just old records. And you'll see that we've been able to do that, and it's greatly helped the city so far.
Thanks, Lian. So to sum up everything that was just said there, what we're doing now is analyzing Wasilla's system to identify the direct needs and planning for the future of a pipeline interconnect. Because there isn't much sense in building a water pipe if Wasilla's system isn't ready for it. So that's basically what we've been up to. So what are we doing next? Under that progressive design-build project, we are working on design and construction of the Herman Road Reservoir, Water Main Extension, Booster Station, and well, with the goal of turning dirt. This summer, if everything works out, we are performing the GIS mapping. We've actually been in the field doing some workflow testing and just making sure that everything's going to work well when we really get some good weather coming up in the summer. We're going to hit that hard with the goal of completion of all the field work by August. That'll turn into then a, an office effort to compile all the data that we collect. We will complete the water system model based on the GIS data that we collect. And in the next few months, we hope to do a route selection study to choose whether or not it makes more sense to do the Alternative 1, Alternative 2, some combination of the two, both of them. But that isn't really set in stone at this point. That'll likely involve all of you sitting in front of us, people in the audience, because it really does affect a lot of people. It's a pretty long project. And then we have a list of needs that are identified in all of the previous work that we've done. It'll be more fleshed out during the modeling effort, GIS mapping effort, and conceptual designs for those projects, feasibility studies. You know, there's, the list goes on of what could happen and what needs to happen. And with that, I will open up to any questions that you may have for us.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. It's pretty helpful. I mean, some of it was stuff we, our Public Works had shown us, but a little bit more in depth than what he had explained last time. So Alternative 1, Alternative 2, basically, option 1 is along the Bogard connection, and it looks like it's running off the map, so it's going as far as it possibly can until it runs into the connection, which they, I think there's, connects around in the Colony area, 49th State Street area somewhere in there. I know they've got some pipe in there somewhere. Option 2, like we said, was essentially along the Parks Highway to where it connects on Trunk, basically right in front of the Matsu Regional. Is there a, what were the two avenues? Or the Alternative 2 was, you said, hey, it might be a shorter route, but the problem is you need a lot more pressure backbuilding. And then obviously, you've told us today as well, we need a reservoir because we need more water up there. What was the reason for option 1 being a consideration or Alternative 1? I don't feel like I heard much of the reasoning behind that.
Well, like I said, it was a, it was a high-level study looking at elevations of where Palmer's system ends and where Wasilla's system ends, and matching up those elevations. It appeared that during the initial $10,000 effort that you could transfer water between the two systems just with gravity. That is still the case, but along that corridor, you might have lower pressures where you wouldn't be able to necessarily serve people just because it wouldn't, it would be less than 40 PSI. But you could get water between the two entities at that point. So that's, that was the main reason.
If I could follow up, Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I mean, some of the preliminary information I have, and I don't know exactly how accurate these numbers are, but Alternative 1 is in the $41 million range, and Alternative 2 is telling me $15 million range. And I mean, I don't know how much you guys know about the numbers or the engineering aspect of it, but has that been brought up to you and been, hey, 1 is well over double the cost? but has that been brought up to you and been, hey, one is well over double the cost? What brings that up on the table still for consideration on the engineering side of it? Is it strictly easier to engineer that way? I'm curious.
It was just, we had to, we wanted to look at, at the option. And that was a logical place to, to look at because it was the extensive each water system. Really nothing more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, guys, for your presentation. Appreciate that. So tonight, later on in the agenda, we're going to be talking about legislative grant an amount of $2 million. And I'll read you what it says here. It's to provide funding for the MSB for use towards city water interconnect. The objection, the objective is to design and construct an internet or an interconnect between these systems. So they're talking $2 million here and you're talking, I think you mentioned a minimum of thirteen and a half million for option two. And you said you're ready to start digging in the ground. So where's that other eleven and a half million dollars coming from?
Well, I think when I referred to digging in the ground, that is related to the Herman Road Reservoir Project and the Water Main Extension to serve that reservoir property. So the ins and outs of, I mean, I haven't studied the budget, but I do know that two million isn't thirteen and a half. So I can't really answer that question beyond just saying that Crystal's looking. And there are other projects that need to happen in order to set ourselves up for the big one, which would be the, the pipeline connection.
So this $2 million, if it is spent toward, essentially toward planning this project, it sounds like could be for not unless that other eleven and a half million dollars pops up someplace?
Eric?
Let me save Chris. So the rest of the funding is to continue the study. We need to have the, we need to have our model complete like Chris and Lion have alluded to. With a design that we know is feasible engineering wise, we'll use that to have federal support. So we'll continue to leverage, because they're always looking for shovel ready. USDA and the other entities that fund clean drinking water projects will look for us to have done the legwork. So we're leveraging the support from the borough who's interested in supporting higher density development to go back to the federal government for those clean water drinking funds and propose complete projects. And they want to see that we've done the work before we bring, you know, grandiose ideas to them. So we're going to continue to look at which is more useful for the valley, which is more feasible to construct, which is something that we can finance through the rest of its life. Back to one of the things Chris was talking about, to Mr. Crafton's question. Alignment one is longer, but it allows more development in that corridor. So there is a very high interest from the borough to say which one is the best for long-term development within the core of the borough. And while it may be longer, more expensive, it may be the best alignment in the long-term future. Or alignment two might rise to the top because of the reviews for what our system needs and what will happen with the development along it. So we want to bring capable designs and then it'll be up to the community through funding and support to decide what the community wants for a long-term project if it, you know, continues to live through the review processes as we go forward.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
So we have a master plan from 2000 for our water system. And so I believe we have a master plan in our CIP for this year too, right?
Through the mayor, I believe we still have a CIP from last year for the master plan. So, because that was sewer last year? Okay, so sewer last year, this year's the water master plan. We're kind of, for this project to move and the monies that we've received from the borough have a very finite deadline. We have to spend them by the deadline. There was no reason to continue to focus on theoretical connections without understanding what our system did. So we're basically building the framework for a master plan for our current existing system. We can look at expansion outside of this interconnect if we want to. I believe the twenty-year-old master plan had a major trunk line going down KGB. That's something that can be evaluated as we pull this into the final master plan. But we've basically been leveraging this study to get the mapping that we need and get the hydraulic, help me outline, what is it called? The hydraulic?
Analysis.
Analysis, yeah.
Ms. Rubio.
I'm still struggling with the water master plan. I've never seen this. I don't know. Somebody, please help me. I'd love to see this.
From 2000?
If we can take an at ease, I would like to see it, please.
I could go get off my, I think I have a paper copy of it.
Never seen it. I'd love to see it.
We'll have a five-minute at ease, six thirty-five. We'll be back on the record at six forty.
Like I remember looking through something and I came across the, like, roads master plan. Never seen the water one. I know they, I was like, man, this is probably one of the.
And we don't even have any, like, if there's one figure, it shows a bunch of it.
We are back on the record at 6:41 PM. Ms. Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you for finding that, Cassie. Sorry, I was just looking at the notes. So through the ARPA, that one is good through the money. I'm trying to do the money trail. Help me out on this.
Do you want to talk about that during when the items up?
Yeah, I don't know if that would be better. Do you want to wait till we talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Any more questions for... Any more... Ms. Graham?
Thank you. So, Wassila's water system is only part of the equation here.
Correct.
We also have this sister city down the road that needs to step up to the pump and spend some money. And I've, you know, watched their budget for 20 years and big chunks of money are not what they specialize in. So I remember when the water was extended down to the hospital site. I mean, that was a huge tug-of-war between Wassila and Palmer. And Palmer won that tug-of-war, you know, rightfully so in my eyes. But when you look at, you know, where the water, where Palmer's water feeds in to the hospital, it comes down Trump Road. And then your interconnect number two, Plan Number Two, the dash red line, instead of following Palmer's water system up to Bogard, has its own piping system there. Am I seeing that correctly? Where we're gonna, where instead of using piping that's in the ground, which currently serves the hospital, we're gonna dig a bunch of new dirt and put in a bunch of new pipe. Is there... Am I missing a reason?
So there's, um, there's an orange...
Because this is a joint project, right?
Yeah. So lion's zooming in. You can see that over there. The, this would follow the Parks Highway Corridor. There would be a short section that is within Palmer's service area. It is primarily within Wassila's service area. That dashed red line is the service area boundary. So it, it does primarily use pipes that is in the ground for the portion that would go up to Palmer, yes. But, um, yeah, the majority of it follows the Parks Highway Corridor for this alternative one.
Okay, and this alternative two, which we're talking about.
Or two, sorry. Yeah.
That utilizes existing infrastructure. I mean, it has to be updated, right, with pumps and so on and so forth. But, uh, but generally existing infrastructure in the ground, even though you say it's a thirteen-and-a-half mile run or, or not thirteen-and-a-half mile, fifteen-thousand-foot run.
Yeah, I think, I think it was, yeah, fourteen, fifteen thousand. And the initial estimate, that also included a bunch of, uh, included two PRVs, pressure-reducing valves, and I think one or two pressure booster stations. As we looked at it, it made more sense to bypass those and connect straight into Wassila's Pressure Zone Four, which would actually, it would, I think, lengthen the overall pipe alignment, but it would reduce the need for those PRVs and booster station two, I believe, because the water surface elevations would allow for transfer between the two systems without gravity or with gravity without a, a pressure booster.
Then a separate question, not a follow-up, but a separate question is, uh, so let's say this all gets completed, ready to go. We flip the switch, so to speak, and there is some sort of a water emergency in Palmer or in Wassila. Does that movement of water happen automatically or does somebody call up Eric and say, hey, Eric, we got a water main line busted in Palmer, you know, we need, we need a whole bunch of water? Does somebody make that decision or, or does this just happen to balance the pressure between the two systems?
I, I wish I had the authority to, uh, to say definitively whether, like, how that would happen. It, it hasn't been figured out what the, uh, what that would look like. There would have to be some kind of agreement between the two cities to share water. But this is just looking at the high-level engineering behind it. Can it work? Yes, it can, but the, the, the politics behind that are outside of the realm of what I'm prepared to talk about.
It's great being in the private sector. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for HDL? Thank you, sirs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are... Now we will hear from the Finance Director on the fiscal year 2026 budget. Cassie, hang on just a minute before you start, please. Have you got all the information you need on that, um, water main supply? Okay, Crystal, will you text Eric and tell him to come on back? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is going to be a presentation on the FY '26 Proposed Operating and Capital Budgets. Uh, we're just gonna have an overview of the City Wassila's '26 Proposed Operating Capital Budgets. We're gonna go over the mission budget, the balance budget, some highlights, the general fund, our special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and then the capital improvement plan. Uh, when we build the budget, we take into consideration the mission statement of the City of Wassila. Uh, it's to provide our optimum service levels to the public as cost-effectively as possible to ensure a stable and thriving economy, provide a healthy community, provide for a safe environment and a quality lifestyle, and promote maximum citizen participation in government. When we also begin this process, we take into consideration the goals and initiatives that are approved through the process that usually begins roughly right around in December and January. And so a lot of that information directs us and, and provides us a path to go forward in order to have our budgets submitted by department heads to figure out the best way to complete those goals in this mission statement. With the current budget that is currently proposed, uh, we will either maintain or improve our existing services, and the city will maintain its zero-mill rate on property tax. We currently with, included with our transfers, our total source of funds is roughly forty-nine point three million. Our total use is thirty-eight point seven with a net source over those uses of ten point five million. We're looking at capital outlay of twenty-one million and then our net change, which is our use in our fund balance and net positions within the enterprise funds and within the general fund, either in its committed fund balance or its unassigned balance, depending upon if it's a capital improvement or needed for general operations of the enterprise funds. With the operating budget, um, we have for 2026, our sales tax continues and remains our number-one revenue source at twenty-seven point three million. It is sixty-seven point five percent of our operating revenue that we operate off of. Uh, the property and vehicle tax is actually our vehicle tax that we get remitted back to us of a hundred ninety-five thousand roughly. Comes through off of your car registration on, that gets forwarded to us. Five point five million is going to be your user fees, any of our licenses, our permits, and any fees that we have towards users. Intergovernmental is going to be any kind of, through different agencies or through other governmental agencies that we provide services for. And then we have local revenue, which is two point one million. Um, and that is through grants and other resources that we receive, and then other revenue is three point nine million for a total of roughly forty point five million dollars altogether in our, in our operating budget. This is that, just a pie chart breaking that down. Again, this is showing that our sales taxes are number-one driver of our, of our revenue of roughly sixty-seven point five percent of that. And with that, we have our expenditures that we're going to have. Our expenditures do not include transfers or the capital projects that are currently listed. They have their own general fund or their own section of our budget that we go over. Actually, tomorrow night, we'll be talking about those. Our general government is sixty, six point one million dollars. That is going to be your clerk's office, the council, records management, administration. It's going to be your HR department, planning, finance, and IT will be part of those. Public safety includes all of our police department areas and along with MACOM, our dispatch center. Public Works, uh, number eight point eight million includes our Public Works, General Administration, roads and parks and properties in regards to that. Cultural and recreational is going to be the museum, the library, recreation services. And, uh, that's everything on that one. And then our non-departmental, which is one point two million, which is anything that is, does not, has a designated department, which is usually our insurance broker fees along with any kind of legal fees that we have for some settlements. And then our new one this year is going to be for fuel inventory for the PD and Road Shop along with our property liability insurance for all those current departments. So that gives us a total operating expenditure of thirty-eight point seven million. Once again, we just kind of have a pie chart coming down through it. Our number-one right now that we have as part of our budget is our public safety area at forty-two point four percent. And then it comes down to public works. Cultural and Recreation and General Government are about equal, and then our non-departmental makes up three point three percent of our budget. The general fund is the main operating fund of the city. It's used to account for all our financial resources that aren't specifically designated for another purpose. It covers our day-to-day expenses of, of running the city. So our total general fund appropriation, including transfers of FY 2026, is roughly forty-four million fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Of that, um, sales tax will be making up twenty-seven point, almost six million in regards to that. Property tax will remain at zero-mill rates for property tax relief. Um, on the screen, you're going to see our general fund revenue. It will have our current actuals from our audits from FY '23, '24, our current adopted FY '25 budget, any amendments that have happened to our FY '25 budget, amended budget, and then our FY '26 proposed budget. I won't go over all those numbers, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer some of those. I think the biggest thing to take notice is, um, a lot of our training activity has been happening within our investment income, and that is where generally our, and our more earned income is coming from at the moment. It is slowly, slowly declining itself down a little bit just due to the market arena at the moment, I guess you could say. And so therefore, we have kind of left it in that area. Um, with that, we have just the breakout of that. So seventy-eight point one-six percent is taxes, and then we have a breakout of the remaining rest of our revenue and with investment coming in at five point two-four. Other revenues at eleven point five-one, um, and license permits, fines, and local revenues are making up the general remaining of that. When it comes to our general fund budget, uh, this is just a breakdown of the last two years of actuals through our audits along with our adopted budget, our amended budget, and then our proposed budget for the upcoming '26. Along with that, it also shows our transfers that we would be doing to another fund out of the general fund. And that has either going to our vehicle replacement fund, roads fund, or any other capital improvement project or enterprise fund. And then we have next is going to be our kind of pie chart, but we have also broken it down in two different ways for you to see. One is by function, which is our public safety at fifty-two percent, and then we have our general government, sixteen. Public Works at twelve. Cultural and Rec at thirteen, non-departmental four, and Legislative at three percent. If you do that right type, uh, that comes through at our personnel expenses, sitting roughly at a seventy-four percent. Our operations or non-personnel, as I like to call it, is eight point two, almost eight point three, or three million at twenty-six percent. And then we do have a few capital purchases, which means that those items are over our five-thousand-dollar threshold of, um, from a supply, moving it into a, into capital purchase for that. Not necessarily a capital improvement project, but it is a capital purchase that is designated within the budget of a certain department at this time. All right. Next, we have our special revenue funds currently. Um, these are used to count for our specific revenue sources. Um, we currently have three special revenue funds. We have one for youth court, one for federal asset forfeiture, state asset forfeiture. Currently, the only one that has a budget for the next coming fiscal year is going to be our youth court, sitting at roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Um, it is made up of a mult, kind of a multitude of revenues in order for it to be continuing on. Sixty-five thousand dollars is our youth court grant that comes from DHSS. There are thirty-five hundred in user fees, eleven thousand in contributions. We do do with our twenty-five thousand dollar transfer in from the Matsu Borough Planning Grant that's been happening for quite a few years. And then they do have a fund balance use of, from FY '25 of roughly forty-one thousand thirty dollars. With that, they began with an eighty-nine thousand one hundred and one, and I am projecting that to be sitting roughly at forty-eight thousand at the end of June of 2026. So they should, um, come in pretty good with that. Uh, the forfeiture funds, those funds, we don't necessarily, haven't brought anything in probably for the last five or six years once we got out of the drug task force a couple of years ago. As we are continuing now to go in, and we have a, a drug investigator currently that may begin to start to come up through the ranks, but those, uh, court cases and things have to be processed in order for us to get our asset forfeitures. It takes quite a years to get through the court system right now, so it may be a couple of years before we recognize it, but we do have to keep a fund open in case we do receive something. So, um, that is why those are still kind of sitting out there.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Graham?
Cassie, looking at the right side of that slide there, beginning fund balance, eighty-nine thousand, ending fund balance, forty-eight thousand. How does that compare with previous years? Have we been drawing that fund balance down by fifty percent over previous years? Or is this an anomaly of a year or?
No, it's pretty normal. They normally run about forty thousand dollars every year pulling from fund balance, usually. Depends a lot of times on where their, uh, youth court trip is that they take and how many kids go on that. Determines how much they actually pull from our, their fund balance, basically. This year, they went to Kodiak, and that was quite expensive. And then next year, I do believe they're going to Nome, which will be pretty bendy also. And then, like I said, it also varies on the amount of kids that are going, so we do try to find other resources, other grants through, uh, MEA or through the Matsu Health Foundation, so we do try to do those grants also. I know that the probation officer, it's been, she is constantly looking for funding sources for them. In regards to our enterprise funds, um, they're used to account for the operations that are financed and operated in a manner like a private enterprise. At the end of the day, they are supposed to either break even or they're supposed to have a small or hopefully some, some kind of surplus so that they can maintain their infrastructure and be able to pay for their capital improvements coming through. Um, of the four enterprise funds that the City Wassila has, the sewer fund, water fund, the airport fund, and then the Menard Memorial Sports Center, we have a general overall expense of roughly twenty-one point four million dollars. Of that fourteen point one million is going to be capital outlay. Personnel expense is roughly about four point four million, and then the operations of all four of those enterprise roughly runs right around two point eight million. That does not include depreciation. Uh, we do not budget for depreciation in our budget, so therefore, that does not include, that comes in after, once our audit is done, it is then put into the books as an actual audit. After that, here is our breakdown of capital projects. It's nice and beautifully colorful, as I like to say. It spans everywhere. Our number-one right now is going to be our airport, sitting at thirty-one point nine million. And then we have water, sewer at eighteen point six, water at fourteen point one. We also have, uh, our roads and row, which is our right-of-way fund that we have at ten point seven, and then parks at four point four, property maintenance at five point seven. Our public works roads is also sitting at their general fund, which is four point nine. General government's three point five, and the Menard is two point eight, along with a vehicle replacement of a two point seven million. And we will go over all those lovely projects tomorrow night in, in depth and any information that is needed for those. And then the only other thing I would just remind anyone, if they have any kind of budget amendments, to get their forms or information to myself and to Jamie so that we can work up documents just to make our lives a little easier when it comes to, terms of putting the numbers together and the ordinance and the fun stuff that happens then. So with that, that's everything that I had.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Cassie, for the presentation. I think there's more question for Mayor. What was the reason why we did this now after we've had three budget meetings? Because we've kind of been through all of this. I mean, I get it's nice for the public to hear, but normally we do this at the introduction of the budget. Is there a reason why we did this today instead of two weeks ago?
I think it was due to the fact that we had a, quite a few presentations that day, that night, April fourteenth. And then also for the fact that it goes through introduction and there's no way to have an actual, um, conversation, discussion through the council at that time because it's going through introduction. It's not going through like tonight where y'all have a chance to actually have a conversation and discussion through it if you have more questions.
Thank you, Cassie. We are now at public hearing. Therefore, ordinances scheduled for a public hearing. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number twenty-five twelve by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, ordinance serial number twenty-five twelve, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by appropriating sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund, fund balance to the Human Resources Department Professional Services account for, for the completion of a classification study.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-five twelve is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Seeing no one, we will close public comment and bring it back to the dais. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Graham?
I move ordinance serial number twenty-five twelve.
Is there a second?
Rubio seconds.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Rubio to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-five twelve. Is there a discussion? Ms. Graham?
Madam Mayor, so this, uh, uh, money is for a classification study, and as everybody knows, personnel acquisition and retainment is the biggest challenge probably facing any government nowadays. And this, uh, what this study is going to do is going to allow us, uh, to see how our jobs line up, our city jobs line up with, uh, jobs in other cities and, and jobs like those, uh, working for HDL or whatever the case may be. So this is really a critical step. It sounds kind of, uh, sounds kind of boring, but this is going to set us up, uh, to be able to have reasonable discussions in the future about what people should be paid and how they should be paid and, and how we can retain our, our people there. So, thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number twenty-five dash thirteen by title.
Thank you. That's amending the fiscal year 2025 budget by accepting and appropriating donated funds from the Valley Border Realtors and the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars for Nunley Park improvements.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number twenty-five thirteen is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-five thirteen?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number twenty-five thirteen.
Is there a second?
Graham.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and seconded by Councilmember Graham to adopt ordinance serial number twenty-five thirteen. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it looks like, and this probably question to Cassie, if I could, Mayor, basically, we can do whatever we want with this money as long as it's going towards park improvements, uh, the seventy-five hundred dollars. If I recall, and I was just more, more of curiosity, was this a reoccurring, uh, grant that we were going to? This is just a one-time grant. I feel like I remember Paula mentioning this is something they can apply for year after year for us or, and kind of apply it where they want it to go.
Eric?
Yeah, so this is a, this is a place-making grant that they got, uh, so it may be available every year. I don't know exactly how their system works. This is not a grant. It's just a donation. There's no reporting on our part. We were using the word grant, but it's not. It's just a donation to go to Nunley Park to support the development plan that we'll be bringing for the council for review.
Thank you.
Ms. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, uh, this is a, uh, very much appreciated, uh, grant, uh, from, uh, the Wassila Border Realtors or is that the correct name?
Valley Border Realtors.
Valley Border Realtors, uh, you know, who, uh, saw a need and applied on their own to get, uh, this money to apply it, uh, towards, uh, Nunley Park. But, but the biggest thing here is this actually shows how, uh, the park improvement process should work. We should get input from the public. We should solicit input and, uh, cooperation from the public and then move forward. So this is, even though it hadn't worked out exactly the way we thought it was, this is a, a big step in the right direction and something big for us to, uh, recognize. And we should certainly accept this grant gratefully and make sure that the Valley Border Realtors is appropriately recognized. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, ordinance serial number twenty-five fourteen by title, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Repealing and reenacting Wassila Municipal Code Title 16, Land Development Code, to substantially change the uses permitted in each zoning district, the review enforcement and permitting procedures, the planned unit development, landscaping, parking, conditional use and variance procedures, and the design standards imposed in the city. parking, conditional use and variance procedures, and the design standards imposed in the city.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 2514 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last names. Your comments are limited to three minutes.
Samuel Goldman. I'm not sure if this is the proper time or waiting till after all the orders are up here, but I'm having, I guess, I'm a business owner. I own four businesses in the city of Wasilla. I own 40 or 50 rental units in the city of Wasilla, not just the greater Wasilla area. I own quite a bit more that are right there on the borough of city, or the border of the city limits. It has become even more increasingly stifling and prohibitive to do anything, to the point where, you know, investors and developers like myself are looking to take all our work outside of the city. I'm working on right now, and the person that'll speak after me is a longtime Wasilla business that's had to move on short notice. We've got plenty of land right down here on Main Street that looks like crap, you know, and unfortunately, I can't even clean up my land due to the permitting issues. I've got condemned buildings and sitting in the city limits that I can't do anything about, really due to the title issues. I would move, and I'd ask to move, and I don't know what I can actually move from this seat, and not you guys' seat, but I would like to propose that maybe someone up there proposes for a full repeal of the Wasilla Overlay District, which is just, as I said, I mean, it's suffocating this area, in my opinion. You know, I own a lot of land in the overlay district. I'm in the business of buying land and spec, and I've been shelving projects for years. I don't live in the city of Wasilla because of how challenging it was to try and build a lake house over on Wasilla Lake. I got fed up and just sold the whole thing off. I'm working with, let's say, another small business in town right now, trying to set them up because they're having to move after, I think, believe 31 years of business and right downtown in the overlay district. And they're going to be out another potentially six weeks revenue, just to see if we can get a conditional use permit in. We took one of the longest, probably biggest waste of money municipal penis I've ever seen last week here at this office with five members of staff here, and the verbiage is so gray and there's so many overlays that there's almost nothing that can be done. So it's like, I feel the best, the best method of action would be get rid of the overlay. Title 16 by itself is stifling enough, and I know you guys are actively working to clean that up so we can start actually developing this out. We need more housing. We need more businesses. We need to really open back up for business. I know Mayor Cottle previously, I mean, he was very active in doing that. And I know we've got a great administration right now and a great staff to do this. So, thank you for my time, or your time.
Is there anyone else wants to testify? Please begin your testimony by stating your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
Karina Forrester. Sorry, this is my first time in a meeting like this. I'm coming here to speak about my family's business that has been running in Wasilla since 1994. Mokamoose is located right there by Gold Rush Jewelers. We were asked to leave. We only had 45 days to find a new location. We, my sister and I have been diligently looking. We've been running into a lot of problems. I'm trying to work with CM. We found the property over off of Main Street. That's where we're looking to set up location. As of right now, we are closed down. We're moving out on the 31st. We were hoping to have a location to be moved to by that time. That's not happening because of what's, and I'm not very familiar, I'm going to say right now, this is all new to me. My dad is the one that took care of everything, and he just recently passed away seven months ago, so it's been up to me and my sister to try and figure out how to, you know, keep the business running. So I'm here to ask you guys for some help in that. Mokamoose has been here for 31 years. Before that, we even had a different business in the same location, just a different type of business. So we've actually been in that location for over 35 years, about 35 years. And we would like to stay in the city of Wasilla, like downtown, for our customers, because once we move, we don't know where they're going to go, you know? And we've spent a very long time building up that customer base, and our customers are super important to us. And my family's legacy is super important to my sister and I and our family. And that's what we're trying to do, is maintain my mom and dad's legacy and what they wanted to do, and hopefully expand on it, you know? So we are a restaurant drive-through. We do have food, but we also have coffee. So I do know that someone had said that there wasn't, those weren't allowed in the new district that you guys are designing. I'm hoping that you guys will make an exception for Mokamoose. Like I said, we are a restaurant. We do have food, and we have been here for 31 years. So, thank you. I mean, I don't really know what more to say, but thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Hearing none, we will close public comment on ordinance serial number 2514. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move ordinance serial number 2514.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Crafton and seconded by Councilmember Bellock to adopt ordinance serial number 2514. Is there a discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like we've all been working on this for a long time, and it's hard to believe that we're sitting with this in front of us. For a lot of people that might not know, and for those that have shown up, we've taken quite an undertaking to, and we've heard a lot of feedback from our public, that working inside the city is near impossible. It seemed like Wasilla had the plague for businesses, and so people ran away from us as fast as they possibly can. And so what we determined was, it wasn't only just our landscaping code, but it was our entire land use development code as a whole. And I want to say it was about two years ago when we really started the undertaking of rewriting this as an entire, entire section. And what we have before us is a very, very good product, I would say. We've taken, I think it's about 300 pages of code, Crystal has been saying, and from my count, it's about 150 pages now, which I think, cutting half of our code, simplifying it, making it easier for a third grader to read, we've done a really, really good job. We're trying to cut as much red tape as possible so that people want to come back to the city of Wasilla. From what I understand, just the word of this getting around has already started bringing people back in this anticipation that we're going to be passing this. If you can see my copy, I've been spending quite a bit of time going over this, and every single one of these is a question or a comment that I have. I very, very much want to be done with this, but I don't think it's fully ready yet. There is some common sense stuff in here that we still want to chip away at. The way it reads just doesn't fit the bill that it should quite yet. And, one, our attorney's not here, so I can't even really dive into the full question. I mean, I know, I understand she's on the phone, but she's not here in person, which I feel like Holly, we wouldn't de-just this if you weren't here in person to have that conversation. So what I would like for the council to do is to consider postponing this for a little bit more time. I'd like us to have a special meeting where we just dive back into this one final time. I have a lot of questions on this, and I think we can really work through this one final time before we're ready to amend this up and pass it. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would like our clerk to schedule a special meeting. And from the conversation her and I had earlier, we are shooting for the 21st of April, was the soonest that we could find a time, and that was with the attorney, correct? Or, sorry, May. That's what I meant. It's May, not April.
Yes.
We're going back in time. We have a time machine, apparently. Motion to, to schedule a special meeting and wait till the 21st.
He's also got to make a motion to postpone.
Rubio seconds. We need a day.
Okay. We are voting on the postponement of serial number 2514.
Madam Mayor, can I speak one more time to my motion?
Well, your motion was to schedule the special.
Yes, I know. I just want to speak. And part of this, keep in mind, so we are going to have another regular meeting. We can only, when we do, we're scheduling the meeting and postponing. We're going to have another regular meeting on the 12th. So, and if we can't have a special until the 21st of May, just know that we're going to have to postpone it one more time. We don't have another regular on the night, on the 26th of May, so it's going to be June 9th before we take this up at a regular meeting, just a heads up to the rest of the council. But I'd really appreciate it. I think we, we've come this far. Let's, let's give it a little bit more time to just really make it the, the good product and justice that it needs to be. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to postpone.
No, right now, it's just to schedule a special meeting for 5:21. That's Wednesday for Title 16. And so per Roberts, you can only postpone the main motion to adopt until the next regular meeting. So his intent, this will go to the May 12th, but correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Crafton, on May 10th, your intent is then to immediately move to postpone it to the 21st.
Correct. When it's ununderfinished business, business, I hope the council understands and agrees that we'd still postpone one more time.
Is that as clear as mud? Was there a second?
Should, should we do, yes, there was a second. Should we do the postponement first and then re, then, does it matter? You're the boss.
I mean, we could, he made, he made it. We seconded it. So motion before you is to schedule that special for 5:21. It's on the floor.
Is there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
Madam Mayor, I move to postpone ordinance serial 2514 till the next regular meeting, which would be May 12th.
Crafton seconds.
Okay, the motion has been made in, by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Crafton to postpone 2514 to the next scheduled regular meeting. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, is there objection to the motion? Motion passed. Oh, sorry, Kathy, I didn't see you.
I didn't get my finger on the button quicker.
Well, you have, you know.
I know. Okay, keep moving.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance serial number 2525 by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As provided for the adoption of the annual budget for fiscal year 2026 and appropriating funds to carry out said budget. This is the first of two public hearings. A second public hearing tomorrow night, April 29th.
The public hearing on ordinance serial number 2525 is now open. Anyone wishing to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Seeing no one, the public hearing on ordinance serial number 2525 remains open and will be continued to the April 29th special city council meeting. And now we are at persons to be heard. It's a time for members of the public to share their views with the council. This is not a question-and-answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration.
Madam Mayor, I'd point a clarification, if I may. Although we, you know, have a second, a reading of the budget ordinance coming up, we do have a special meeting coming up on the 1st, where the public is welcome to come and testify. We will only be talking about the budget at that time. So, is that correct?
Through the chair to Councilmember Graham, we do have it what we call tentatively scheduled. It depends on the action you take on the 29th. I'm going to assume tomorrow night, you're not adopting the budget. So we do have a meeting scheduled May 1st, and then currently on the books, if not adopted, May 1st. We have one May 5th. If not adopted, May 5th. We have one May 6th, and the council's certainly welcome to schedule more meetings.
And the public has opportunity to testify tomorrow night on the 1st this week as well as a special.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And basically, at every single meeting, because there's a public comment before we're even going to go into committee of the whole, just to clarify as well.
Mr. Sterns, it's your turn.
My name is Tom Sterns. I'm the senior ambassador for the Wasilla Area Seniors Incorporated. This is the time of the year that we are most active. We are doing our fundraisers, and so the things that we're going to be talking about tonight are all fundraisers. The, we will be closed on the 26th of May for Memorial Day, but that will be our only time. So we are, we have just completed our five-year strategic plan survey. And on our website, we need input from seniors and from anybody else that would like to tell us what they think we should be doing in the next five years. So if you could go to our, our website, www.wassillaseñores.com, and take the survey, we'd appreciate it. Miles for Meals Online Auction, auction time, time, 6 to 10, this, this next month, May. The goal is $100,000. And so we need you to, to register and to bid often and bid high. Then for the ladies, there is a Mother, Mother's Day Tea and Fashion Show. It's a fundraiser for the Meals on Wheels. And that's on the 10th of May. Again, it's a fundraiser, $50 a person. It begins at 11 o'clock over at Wassey. And then my event, the Memorial Tree Dedication on the 23rd of May, which is a Friday, at 12:45 in our meeting room. That is a, an opportunity where we plant a tree for the people that have died in the previous year. And so we have a little ceremony for that. And then in June, we have the Miles for Meals Fun Run Walk and Roll. And so registration, you can register now on our website, but the event is on the 21st of June. That's a Saturday. Registration then, the day of the event is 9 o'clock, race at 10. And then you can also come to, come to our gym and get ready for the event by supporting, supporting us there. So, thank you. And you all have this. I'm your thing. So that'll tell you everything you need to know.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sterns. Sam Goldman, you want to speak again?
Uh, yeah, I can keep going. You not tired of me yet?
Three minutes.
All right. See, I didn't, I figured I was out of order there.
No, you weren't. You just have two opportunities to speak.
Okay.
State your name, please.
Sam Goldman. I was going to carry on, I guess, where we left off on that and what Karina said, and she had to step out. One of the big issues we found in this specific situation, which may help, is her business is in an overlay district. It is a coffee shop, as I'd say is the primary use, the license is for a restaurant with a drive-through. We can't have a coffee shop with a drive-through in the downtown overlay district. But there is quite a few grandfather items in the downtown overlay district. I mean, I was looking out the front door, all these boarded-up windows and stuff out here. You have one of the most decrepit duplexes in town, which I do own, so. But we share a parking lot on that one. There is, there's, I guess what I'm seeing is, it's already existing down here, and we're trying to do better. But because of the way the codes are written, we can't even find her a place without rolling the dice to see if she can get a conditional use permit. I can't open- I can't open up the site to see what the feasibility is for the utilities, because there are all kinds of buried stuff on the site without a temporary permit. I can't get a temporary permit unless I know what my long-term plan is. So it's like, we're running into all kinds of overlays, you know, kind of chicken before the egg, cart before the horse, looking at potential massive expenditure just to, you know, I guess go exploratory on land downtown. It's, as I said, it's very cost prohibitive. We have to spend quite a bit of money just to even see if we can get her permit on this site. In the meantime, she's waiting for potentially five to six weeks, because a conditional use permit would have to come before, I believe, the planning commission, and maybe city council as well, but I'm not a hundred percent on that, so planning commission. So it's got to be heard, and it could be turned down. So if she puts all her eggs in that basket and that gets turned down, she's out of, out of business for another potential six weeks, where she could be looking right down the highway in either direction and trying to cut a deal with somebody just out of the city to, you know, potentially could go drop that shop over there tomorrow and be up and running within a couple of days, once the utilities are tied in. So, it's, it's been extremely frustrating process. I tried to go online and just turn in a permit, and I've had meetings to work on the permit. Everybody here's been great, except for, nobody can help, because the codes are so stacked and interlocked and that nobody can dig through the arbitrary mess of what it is currently. Hence my wanting a repeal of the overlay district, so we have one set of codes, not two. How'd that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will close. Persons to be heard, and we are at the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please read the items for approval under the consent agenda by title.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this evening, our only items are regular meeting minutes, City Council, March twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, regular meeting minutes, April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, special meeting minutes, April fifteen, twenty-twenty-five, and special meeting minutes, April sixteen, twenty-twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved by Councilmember Cottle and seconded by Councilmember Crafton to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there an objection to the motion? You're none, the motion is approved. Okay, unfinished business, ordinance serial number twenty-five zero seven. A motion to adopt is pending. Is there further discussion on this ordinance?
I like that gentleman, that's awesome. Okay, so go back to at the beginning, we had the gentleman up presenting HDL. I know they couldn't answer that, but now Kathy, you're in the hot seat, actually. I'll go with you, though. Is there money in the CIP for this?
For, there is money in the CIP currently. It was approved last year in that twenty-five's budget. There's currently two million thirty thousand, that is budgeted in there for new water towers, and one of those is Herman. And then, the other one is one million eighty thousand. I think that one was.
Herman Road as well.
Herman Road Water Main Extension, which, that one has been in it for a little bit while, but that is because of the DOT going to be upgrading that road, and we wanted to get our utilities done before that road is redone and paved and everything. That was, has been in the budget probably for the last few years, as we have other things on it. After that, there is nothing else, no, we did have money for the current year budget. There is money in the twenty-sixth budget for the water towers, I believe. And then, I believe, is there? And so they have an additional one million two hundred fifty thousand for the new water towers. We added five hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Herman Road Water Main Extension. And that's everything that's related to that, to the water interconnect project within the water.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, you had sent us, oh, I'm pulling it up here, I've got too many things going on, a memo here the other day. And this is what I was referencing earlier, and into the dollar amounts of what things were crossing, okay, you know which one I'm talking about. So, down here at the bottom of that one, it's basically nine point eight million dollars, nine point nine. And in that is money for the water towers. What I'm curious is how we're getting to the fourteen-nine million, and is that, let me ask that question first, how are we getting to the fourteen-nine million?
Through the mayor, maybe you can clarify your question, getting to the fourteen-nine million?
So what does that include? Does that include the full build-out and connection?
So the fourteen point nine million is the working estimate for the full build-out of the southern route.
Okay. And the fourteen point nine, does that include us having to build out new towers? Or are we going to have to do the towers in addition to fourteen-nine million? And I understand we might not be spending that money, I'm just trying to get my rap, my mind around.
There was no towers in the fourteen point nine plan, that wasn't part of the initial ten thousand dollar work order that HDL talked about in the beginning.
And so, this fourteen point nine million, how much have we received grant-wise for this?
The project that you're referring to would be the two ARPA grants from the borough, which was?
One point eight six five.
Yes.
The one point eight six five and the two point one million. And then, there's also seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received as our own designated legislative grant that we received last year. And then, we also received, now currently have the two million pending right now from the Matsu Borough, and that is another designated legislative grant, but it's processing through the borough instead of through us.
And so all of that is, is supposed to go towards that fourteen point nine? Sorry, I'm going to do some math here real quick.
Yeah, so, if I can give a little feedback, if, as you do the math, so there are things about our current system that need to be addressed before any connection is ever made. And so that's what these funds are being leveraged for right now, identifying how our system operates, identifying where our assets are, identifying the age of our assets, because we don't want to connect to a system and then not understand that we have an Achilles' heel somewhere in our current system. One of those things that we need, that wasn't part of the original ten thousand work order, was more water storage in Zone Four, which is the Herman Road Water Tower. The other thing that we don't have is any way for water to travel back from, to travel from Palmer into our system, and that's the Richmond Hills Booster Station. It's a one-way system right now, so that would need to be evaluated, too. So we have a lot of internal upgrades that we can make with these funds before we ever venture down installing a water line down the Parks Highway to connect to Palmer, if that's the project that the council decides to fund. So a lot of important improvements can be made to our system with these funds before a project is let to, to install water lines down the Parks Highway. Or the alternate route up north, if we wanted to go down Spruce and go to Bogart and over to Colony High School. There's a lot to be done internally before we are ready to make that commitment.
Madam Mayor, sorry, Mr. Graham, you haven't gone yet, go ahead.
Mr. Crafton.
So Kathy, of this, you know, three point one million dollars roughly, and then the one and a half million dollars that you mentioned in the CIP for this year, when, this is probably an Eric question, when do we suspect that those projects will go underway? When will that money start being spent, or is it pretty much just going to sit here in an investment account until we get the whole enchilada ready to go?
We have two deadlines with the ARPA money, and it is twenty-six.
So the ARPA money, the first ARPA money, the one point eight million and the two point one million, we have to have it worked fully completed on that on October thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six. The Matsu Borough has to report it to the feds and everything, they do their, their grant analysis part on their end by the end of December. So December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six is the kind of drop-dead date that the borough has to report everything to, to the federal government. The legislative grants, one of them, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, has a June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine performance period. And then the Matsu Borough, the two million that is currently on right now, has a date of May thirtieth of twenty-twenty-nine, and that is due to the fact that we have to report to them, and they report back to, so it's kind of a flow-through part, but.
And we have contracts in place right now to get this project work done this construction season, is that correct?
All, yes, all of these, except for the, the two million, does not have a contract, obviously, because we have a warrant. But the two ARPA grants, both have been encumbered, both have contracts and both have been approved, and they're working on them, and we're paying on them currently.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Sorry, first question, could you repeat those dates for the contracts or the funds again, the ARPA money and all that?
The two ARPA monies, the first two ARPA is the one point eight and the two point one, we have to have all work completed by ten thirty-one of twenty-twenty-six. The legislative grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand has a June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine. And then the Matsu Borough's designated legislative grant, that two million that we're talking about currently right now is May thirtieth of twenty-twenty-nine.
Thank you. To follow up, if I could, Madam Mayor. These dollars really just have to go to anything that involves the interconnect, so.
So.
If building a water tower, if it, building our, our own infrastructure, instead of us spending our own money, we're saying, hey, we're going to, we're going to build a water tower with this, we're going to do all those things, just us knowing, and if we're, I'm just trying to think, hey, because, I mean, there's another page here that says we're hoping for another seven point two, but until it's in our account, to me, the money doesn't exist. If we have to foot, basically, we just have to foot the bill, knowing that later on down the road, so, spending, it's the same either way. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rubio.
Madam Mayor, so I think I misunderstood, the Herman Water Towers, two, three, two million?
It currently has a, a balance of two million thirty thousand. We're requesting, in the F twenty-six budget, of one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is a request on the five-year projection of the same amount for twenty-seven, and then roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty-eight at currently. That is the projection, unless there are grant funding that could come through in a different way.
One more time, what was the existing?
Two million thirty thousand. And then there's one million two hundred and fifty thousand in the current twenty-six budget, twenty-seven budget, and five hundred and fifty for twenty-eight is currently projected. And then if you do the water main extension, I don't know if you want that or not, there's one million eighty thousand currently. And there's five hundred and forty thousand for twenty-six, and there is a hundred and twenty thousand projected for twenty-seven.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify, I mean, I have my budget, but the, the Herman Water Tower previously appropriated, what's in there is different than the number you gave me, that's why.
That's the balance, that's not the appropriated amount, that's the balance remaining currently. So we probably have to expense something out of that amount.
Ms. Rubio.
Madam Mayor, it's baseball season, and I feel like we're in a pickle. Like, I feel like whether we choose alternative one or two on this, and pending funding of seven point two, I struggle with it. I want the Herman Water Tower, I want the extension. It, to me, on the table, it feels like if we don't say yes on this, for some reason, we can't do a Herman Water extension or tower without saying yes to this. Because I don't believe that's true, because it hasn't been brought to our table, other than this package.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. So if we commit to these, are we having, like, who's going to tie our hands and say we have to spend another, just to give you the number, I did the math, it's eight point eight million eight hundred and ninety-two thousand and change. That, that's of the fourteen point nine, and if we subtract the money we've received, and that includes the two million that, tonight, the remainder of that is eight point eight nine two. Just, that's the math that I did there. We would still need additional money to obviously get us to fourteen point nine million, you know, like that, like, we, basically, fourteen point nine's not disappearing. Who's saying we have to do it? Not saying we won't, I'm just saying, who, somebody going to come here and force us to do it, or they going to take the grant money that we've already spent at that point?
No.
Just a curiosity question.
They could require, they could request it back. The federal government could request it back, that you did not, did not complete your scope of work and your assurances that you were going to continue when we signed the grant agreements that says we were going to do these projects.
Okay.
So there is that possibility, because three of these grants would be federal government grants.
Okay, so there is a chance that we technically could have to back pay. The other portion of that would be, what about Palmer? Because I, I, from what I understand, I mean, we're kind of on a handshake deal with Palmer right now, we don't have a definitive that they're willing to let us to connect as well. Do we, do we have that definitive answer?
The study started with Palmer's agreement, and we've been keeping them in the loop with us moving ahead for these grants. They decided not to apply for them. I'm going to disagree a little bit with Kathy. We are meeting the requirements of those grants, that we are addressing and looking for the possibility of connection. The ten thousand dollar study was enough for the federal government to feel comfortable to give us these monies to move ahead with this. They would not support us taking it and trying to do something with sewer or some other completely unrelated project. But as we continue to move the ball down the path and figure out the right directions, bring it back to the council for the scope and oversight to say, you've shown us two alternatives, we like it this way or that way, and we keep moving, we need to have designs to go back for future funding. This was never intended to build the connection, it was to get us started, and the federal government knows that. So if we continue to be forward and honest about what we're doing to meet that scope, I feel confident that we've met the desire of the federal government, and we have an asset that we bring forward for future funding to say, look, we've done the evaluation, we've worked with the partners, both Palmer and the borough. It brings valley balance, you know, brings value to the valley for higher density. And so, we've been, we've been the front-runners in this idea where Palmer has decided not to. The borough has supported us with these two, three now, funding packages, as we continue to communicate with them and Palmer about our progress.
Does Holly have a thought on that?
Holly, would you weigh in on this, please?
No, I mean, I do think that Eric's representation is accurate, but, I, I mean, I'm not sure if we want to, want me to issue a memo or something that goes into more detail, if that would be helpful, if I do want to, it might be worth reviewing.
Council, do you want a memo from Holly?
I'd appreciate, appreciate it, I mean, it's just a matter of her looking at the grants we've received, looking at the language and giving us a definitive.
Okay, they want a memo.
Okay, I mean, that would be, that way you have it in writing.
Eric, let me ask you something, we are not voting on, or they are not voting on which way it goes tonight.
Not tonight, no.
No, that's what I thought.
We'll be bringing data for both decisions and bringing a way for you to equate the value for both alignments, so that that decision can be made in the future.
So basically, what they're voting on tonight, this is from my own understanding, guys, is this money we will use for Herman Road.
Some of it, yes, and what I intend to do is, we know this is an Achilles' heel, we don't have enough storage. We couldn't, if we installed an empty pipe and then tried to connect in the future, we'd say, oh, we messed up, we should have done this first. So these are the drop dead needs for that zone. And then we complete that and we bring the plan forward. And then if it meets the threshold for continuing, if the council supports it, then we know what the cost is going to be and we have a package to bring to the next federal, uh, grant applications. We continue to build, um, support from our state and federal, uh, uh, representatives and we look for that future funding.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, uh, a couple of questions. Uh, number one, the two million dollars that we're talking about tonight, uh, actually has nothing to do with the Herman Road Water Tower. I mean, that's all internally funded, uh, through the city of Wasilla capital budget. Um, last year, this year, and the next capital year, that will completely pay for the Herman Road Water Tower without outside grant funding. Is, is, is that correct?
I, I can't commit to that at this point. We are still in the, uh, economic design of that. So here's what I'm concerned about. Everything is going to cost more. I don't know what's going to happen with steel costs for water towers. I don't know what's gonna happen with steel costs for ductile iron. Herman Road is a really long road. We've got to get from Parks Highway back to the end of Manny. And I don't know what those unit costs are right now. So we're going to be identifying that as we work through a project that is, the Herman Road Extension is a borough project that's being done by the state for the borough and we're just, uh, a party to that. We are trying to be ahead of that project in very uncertain commodity prices. So we're working with H D L now that we've been able to pivot the contract from, um, Old Matt to this with the Borough's agreement through our, um, grant to then make that the, uh, that is the, um, critical path. We have to figure out what the extent of that project is going to be and how we'll connect at the Herman Road, Parks Highway intersection, and then how far our funding will go. So that's what we're working on right now so we can bring it back to the council and show you what the anticipated engineer's estimate is to do that. I'm really worried about capacity at this point, funding-wise. I just don't know what's gonna happen in the next eight or nine months as we crunch those numbers and it hits the street. So I don't want to overcommit how far we can get with the current funding right now.
Okay, I, I appreciate that explanation, but I don't think it answered the question. So with the money that we have currently appropriated and the money that you're asking for, you anticipate, uh, based on that schedule that we've worked off of for a couple of years now, that that will be enough to complete the water tower, but not necessarily the water main extension from the tower to the Parks Highway. Maybe I didn't explain that correctly, or asked that correctly.
I, I think you're right. I don't know what the total cost of the water tower and the extension are at.
Well, nobody knows that, right?
Right. We need to get further along to figure that out and that's what is our critical path right now.
Okay, and the, the second thing I have is, is just an observation. Uh, you know, we've all been, uh, in the valley for a long time and, uh, the valley has always been, uh, uh, pretty conservative for a long time. Particularly the Wasilla area has been pretty conservative, uh, and continues, uh, to be so. And because we have been, uh, uh, conservative over the years, we have missed out uh, on doing a bunch of planning which gives us shovel-ready projects, uh, which, because when funds pop up from the feds, I mean, they pop up. You know, it's not that they say, hey, what do you want to do next year? It's they come forward and say, hey, got one point six million dollars, what can you do with it right now? Same thing, uh, you know, same thing with, uh, uh, the state government. I mean, we have missed out on a bunch of road projects because we just didn't have the planning. We didn't have something we could pull out of our back pocket and say, yeah, here's, here's Herman Road, here's what we need. Uh, here's a general estimate of what it, what it may be. So I, uh, while I agree, uh, with Councilperson Rubio that this puts us in a, a weird situation, uh, I do think that when it comes to shovel-ready projects, this one needs to be there. For us to continue to develop the shops at Sun Mountain there, uh, to get, uh, hotels in there, to get additional, uh, uh, retail in there and have adequate fire protection, I, I think this has to happen and I am gonna vote, uh, for this ordinance.
Ms. Rubio. Madam Mayor, uh, question to Eric, is this the only decision we have? Um, is there, you know, the other route that, is there another option?
I'm not sure I understand. Another option for?
To get the Herman Tower. I feel like you can put a water tower and I could be wrong, Eric. Um, put a water tower up, we can fund it. And that Herman Road Water, Water Main Extension, I'm pretty sure we can fund that too. Um, is this, are we pressed to only this option, saying yes to this or are there other options that are not on the table?
I'm, I'm still not following. I guess the question is, do you want to offset two million dollars of city sales tax with this grant?
I want to offset alternative route forty and one and two. I mean, I'm asking, is, is the only way we're gonna get the, the water tower at Herman and the water main extension is to go this route? Going forward with this route, this is the only way we, we could do this.
Oh, you're, you're concerned about choosing alternative one already?
No, I'm asking, is there another route? Leave this to the side, this is A. For if there's a Plan B, hey, the city's gonna fund the water tower at Herman, that's gonna keep that Hilton Hotel moving forward, everything around that location moving forward and the water main extension of Herman. I'm asking, what's B look like? Is there another decision? Could there be?
Uh, yes, so B would mean that we figure out what the cost is and we can't build it till we come back to the council and ask for city funds and then we've missed this two million as a grant.
So we are in a pickle.
Yeah. It's either.
I'd say it's an opportunity. We, we received two million dollars to better our system.
Right.
And it meets the intent of the interconnect because they are directly tied to each other.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I just want to go back to something I was asking earlier and kind of what Eric was saying and Holly's already leaning towards his thing is, if we accept this money, and sorry, Mike, I know you passed down some of this money here, but we're basically saying, hey, our intention is to move forward with connecting to Palmer. But if for some reason along that process, we build a water tower, we connect, we get all of our backend infrastructure in place that needs to be put in place prior to running that pipe from, and looking at the map here wherever it was, which is basically right at, uh, Seward Merity in there. Looks like it's right around that overpass areas where it's gonna connect from there all the way to, uh, the Palmer side. If we never actually get to that here soon, I, I mean, we've still accepted the money and we've, we've covered some of our cost, basically. We're still doing what we can. I, I'm not saying we're not gonna do it, I'm just saying we're doing the best we can to work for it. So it, it really does make sense for us to, um, to accept this. I appreciate the, uh, conversation here. I think a lot of the reason why this was delayed is we just didn't have all this information and having the engineers here explaining a little bit more of this project. So I'm, I'm a, I'm a yes vote on this. I appreciate you indulging us in our time, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Graham.
One, one last item, Madam Mayor, and I don't know if the, uh, Borough manager can shake his head yes or no, but this is a grant from the state to the Borough. The Borough is the one, the Borough is the one that's assuming the risk for this grant and doing the reporting on the grant. So if we screw this up, the Borough's on, not the city, would that, would that be roughly true to say?
So through the mayor, this is why you don't come to other people's meetings. Mike Brown, the Borough manager, uh, so can I back up for a second to get to your question?
Of course you may.
So when we were first looking at these ARPA funds, and I'm gonna look around to see if anybody nods east and west as opposed to north and south, we were looking at, how can we help the cities advance their own infrastructure? So we funded approximately two point five million dollars each to, one, two point five million dollars to each city to fund booster stations because that does help essentially water and delivery of water, I would say probably to the boundaries of the water districts or beyond in the case of Palmer. So we, we see a benefit there. And then we had the conversation about how do we take that ten thousand dollar study that was done and put some real engineering to it? And so when we leaned into that, it was about one point eight million dollars if I recall correctly. And then what, what is the ordinance before you tonight is a state legislative grant to match that. So we went to Juneau and lobbied last year because locals already put money into this project to say, hey, state, why don't you come and meet us halfway? And that's what the two million dollar grant before you is tonight. Because we recognized and we knew then that the cost to just design this and do some, do the parliamentary engineering was gonna be about four or five million dollars. Uh, now there are all, there are, are two alternatives and we're not anywhere close to, to getting to that point. The intent was always to take the design and leverage that for future federal funding, which was discussed earlier. So, no, we don't have funding to construct. But right now, we don't have enough information to take that forward, um, to even know what to ask for because no, no alternative's been decided and we don't have fidelity around what would be required to, to make the system work. If I understand it, I guess the question might be is, does the city of Wasilla need the Herman Road storage and water main extension regardless of the interconnect? And I think the answer is yes. So in my opinion, that's not a pickle. You need that infrastructure for the city anyway. So I, I think there might be a little confusion that's overlapping the two, whereas the interconnect, maybe we design it out and it never moves forward because in the end, it is gonna require an agreement between the two cities. And I would expect the Borough's gonna have to figure out how to participate in that too. Um, but we can't get to that point if we don't get a design. Because I don't think, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna throw money at a project where there's no detail about what's required. And I don't, and I, if I'm correct, is it fourteen point nine million dollars is the cost to construct for alternative two?
Yeah, the short one.
That has nothing to do with these other city projects that are inside the existing system. Does that help? I'm really reluctant to get up here because I don't want to muddle your meeting, your meeting and I want to stay in my lane. But that's, that was what the intent was. And when Eric was talking about alternative one and two, we're just looking to spur economic development. Higher density development for a regional benefit, benefits the, the cities, benefits the Borough, benefits all of the taxpayers. That's what we're going for. I don't know where the city of Palmer will fall on this yet. I think we've been kind of wait, in my opinion, I've been kind of waiting to see till they get a new city manager and we'll kind of figure that out. Uh, but that doesn't preclude us to move forward with the design. And that's why we sub-granted it to the city of Wasilla is because we needed somebody to execute it. We don't, we don't, we're not an owner of your utility or Palmer, so we thought it would be best handed, best handled by one of the cities. And Wasilla stepped up and said, we'll take it off. And so that's why we sub-granted, we'll participate. But you have more working knowledge of the system than we do at the Borough. Our utility's in Talkeetna. Does that help? I, if there any other, I'll try to.
Mr. Graham.
Uh, thanks, Mike. Glad I could put you on the hot seat here.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think my head's, I got tuned up now already.
That does help, but it didn't really answer the question. Uh, to me, it seems the grant was, uh, through ARPA to the state and from the state to the Borough. Is that not correct or is it from the state to the city?
So through the mayor, uh, to Mr. Graham, the first one point eight million dollars, one point nine, it was somewhere in that ballpark, was American Rescue Plan Act funds that came directly to the Matsu Borough. The Matsu Borough Assembly agreed to appropriate that and allocate it to the city of Wasilla as a grant. The two, the two million dollars that's here before you came to the Borough for the same purpose, to match the interconnect design funding. And the Borough agreed to pair that with the original one point nine million as match money so that it can all be put in the same contract and move full, move to it, to advance the design for the interconnect.
And, and the Borough made that promise to the state and to the feds. And at this point, uh, if we approve this, the city is making that promise to you, but the responsibility for that money is still relies on the Borough, uh, to ensure that it is properly completed. We, essentially, the city's the subcontractor. Is that kind of how I'm seeing this?
So through the mayor to Mr. Graham, that, that's correct. To be clear, the one point nine initially was federal funding. The two million dollars that's before you tonight is state funding. And so the Borough is the grantee, if you will, on both pots of money. We took the scope of work and mirrored that in our grant to you. You are a sub-grantee. So yes, we're still on the hook for the grant. But we adopted the same scope that was in the original grant to the Borough and carried that forward to the city of Wasilla so that you only do what's allowable, allowable per the grant. But half was feds, half was state.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
This is the last trip to us.
Here, not hearing any more questions. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, please read ordinance, the AM and the IM by title.
Thank you. Ordinance serial number twenty-five eleven, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget by appropriating seventy-five thousand dollars from the general fund fund balance to the sewer repair and maintenance fund for the purpose of unanticipated equipment repairs. With that is AM number twenty-five twenty, contract award to R W C Group in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents for twenty twenty-seven international pumper truck engine repairs. And lastly, IM number twenty-five oh seven, additional information to support ordinance serial number twenty-five eleven and AM twenty-five twenty related to repairs to the sewer pumper truck.
Okay, thank you. A motion to adopt is pending. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is adopted. We are now at new business. Madam Clerk, please.
Madam Mayor, sorry, can we take a five-minute recess before we dive into this part?
No. We'll take a five-minute break. On the record at 8:11, Madam Clerk.
Yes, so item, next item of business is AM number 2522, which is the appointment to fill vacant council seat C, interview of applicants and appointment. And I did want to just state for the record today, I don't know if you received my email, but applicant Arlene Renee Win Hill unfortunately withdrew her application. So we have two, um, applicants before the council to interview. The first is a gentleman by the name of Rory Timothy Grant and then Mark Edward Schmidt. I believe Mr. Schmidt is up in the conference room.
Oh, right here.
Okay, is Mr. Grant in attendance?
I don't know. He's still here.
I thought I saw, there was a couple of them.
I think he was here.
So typically, the council interviews applicants, um, alphabetically. And so we've asked, until Mr. Grant's, uh, interview is completed, we ask for Mr. Schmidt to go and wait up in the conference room.
Do we need to find Mr. Grant?
Yeah.
Crystal's right there. If you want to go, go.
Oh, okay.
Do we need to take a brief ad-ees as we find him?
Don't look at me. I'm just. He's in the restroom.
There was two people that were still sitting.
In the back corner.
That was him?
No.
Left. I mean, my gosh, before Title 16, I want to say he left.
Oh, he was scary, man.
You have to pull my hat out.
Saw the budget ran.
Yeah, he's like, oh my gosh.
Y'all people are brave.
What I have to look forward to.
I couldn't even see him.
Maybe you're thinking, ooh, I just dodged a bullet.
Well, I wish to proceed then with Mark Edward Schmidt.
You know, there's nobody in.
Do you want to bring Mark back?
Yeah, bring him back.
What's never happened.
I know.
Still going in there. There's candy in there.
Last time.
First one on the floor.
Did you think it was going to be?
So I'll say, do you have his contact info? Do you want to call him to you?
Came in second.
I don't.
The fact that.
I'll call him.
Yes, I mean, I don't necessarily want to.
Yeah, we're on break. Now we're not.
Okay, guys, well.
Hot seat, huh?
We're going to do one question.
Well, he gets five minutes first.
Ian, shut up. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, my name is Mark Schmidt.
And tell us a little bit about yourself.
A little bit nervous, but here goes. Um, I grew up on a farm in Idaho and, uh, in growing up on a farm, I learned to, uh, you fix things when you're on a farm growing up. And you work hard to make sure everything gets taken care of because there's time criteria that matters hugely, like especially if, uh, there's pending rain or pending dry season, you're getting the hay off the field. And in doing so, I, I learned a very good work ethic. And with that work ethic, it took me a long ways. Uh, went through, uh, you know, high school. In high school, I was a class president, um, for my high school there in Bellevue, Idaho. After that, uh, went to college to work on vehicles, automotive college and management. Uh, graduated to the top of my class, uh, for automotive in college for, with the honors. Um, I was also an ambassador while I was in college. I loved volunteering. Even after college, I went to the Boise Rex Department and volunteered teaching, um, uh, whitewater rafting. We took blind kids out whitewater rafting and we were teaching them how to waterski. Uh, volunteering has been always part of my life that I very much enjoyed helping people solve problems. And I think this will be very valuable in, uh, what we're doing here. Um, further on, then I moved to Alaska in 2003 and, uh, lived just outside of Wasilla, worked right here in Wasilla the whole time. Started out at Chevrolet of Wasilla. I was a service manager there for five and a half years. And then I moved over to Kendall Ford of Wasilla, have been there the last seventeen, going on 17 years this December. Um, I am the service manager there. Um, we run a huge budget. Uh, I love crunching the numbers. I mean, I literally love diving into these numbers and, and making sure my budgets line up with all the other stores and making sure my store is actually thriving and doing better than our comparative stores, uh, throughout our company. We have over 40 stores, Kendall does. And I want to be the best store in my area in every category. So literally line item by line item, I would look at and make sure our alignment is great. And in doing so, I like to guide all my people to do the best that they can do. And in guiding my people, I want them to, you know, put away for savings. I want them to be able to afford the, the lifestyles they need to have their kids grow up in a, a good community. And, uh, so I very encourage all my employees to, uh, save and to, uh, do what I did and, uh, move forward on all that. Um, trying to think. I lost my train of thought. Sorry about that. But, uh, I really think I can, uh, put, uh, forth energy into this. I put forth energy into a lot of stuff I do, everything I do. And I always keep a very positive attitude when I'm working with all my people, um, encouraging them to be their best. And I think that's why we have such a great team down there, Kendall Ford of Wasilla, because of encouragement and the camaraderie we have going on. We're one of the top stores in CSI for our, uh, region, as well as the number one store for all of Kendall, for all the Ford stores. They have 14 different Ford stores in the Northwest. Um, also, I volunteer up here in Alaska at my church. I help with the Sunday school class on Sundays, as well as the men's group. We have a carnivore night that I really enjoy camaraderie with, uh, the rest of my men at my church. Um, I also volunteer at the Maduska, uh, range down here in Palmer, as a range safety officer twice a month. And as well as I coach a small bore league, which shooting, shooting is a very good sport, especially here in Alaska. And I coach the junior team, which mostly high schoolers. And a lot of those go off to international competitions. And we've had many, many winners of international competitions through all this training and stuff we put forth. Uh, I think I can better help, uh, the rest of the team here, working with each and every one of you. I, I run a very, very, uh, professional, uh, uh, organization with my, my crew, as well as, uh, moving forward. I like to joke around, have fun, and keep everything positive. And I'm a problem solver. And, uh, that's kind of a little bit about me.
Okay. All right, Ian, you want to go first?
Does Mr. Schmidt understand the process that we're going to go through? Is that been explained to him?
Did we try?
Has Mr. Schmidt been explaining the process here, what's going to happen during this interview process that people are going to ask questions?
Each council member will ask a question. Uh, actually, I have two questions to ask, so we'll go in alphabetical order. First round of questions, followed by second round of questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Kathy's first.
Okay, Kathy?
You're in the hot seat now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, question number one. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. During the uncertain economic climate that we are currently facing, what do you see as the number one priority for the city of Wasilla?
Did you say the climate?
Yes. Did you want me, you want me to repeat that?
What's that?
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes, would you please?
Okay. During the uncertain economic climate we are currently facing, what do you see as the number one priority for the city of Wasilla?
The number one priority would be to keep the taxes low so we can, uh, continue to grow. I think that's what attracts a lot of people to our, our city here. I love a small town. I grew up in a small town. And I think that is the most important thing is keeping our taxes low, as well as developing our infrastructure. And, uh, I really believe there's free money out there everywhere with grants and stuff like that. And, uh, even myself at the Ford store down there, I call it CLP money. It's customer loyalty money that Ford gives out. And I'm like the king of applying for it and receiving money for our customers in that aspect. So I believe that would be the key.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, serving on the council, serving on the council often requires balancing the immediate needs of the community with long-term planning. How do you personally prioritize when short-term interests conflict with long-term goals?
Wow, that's a tough one. Um, a lot of times it takes, I mean, I faced with the same situation up at work. What do I do when I have a temporary, uh, situation that maybe steps outside the realm of my long-term goals? And what I have to do is sometimes take a step back and take a bird's eye look at the situation and say, how can we implement that into the long-term goal? Or maybe I haven't sold the original plan correctly to that person that takes us outside the normal realm and maybe try to redirect that to the same realm of, uh, direction of the long-term goals.
Mr. Graham.
Thank you for, uh, applying, Mark.
Yes.
So, uh, as a council person, you have a continuous opportunity and a responsibility to amend, to improve and to enforce city code through budgeting, listening, and proposing solutions which assure and improve the quality of life for our citizens and our businesses. As such, you have a tremendous opportunity to showcase and promote your experiences and values. What experience will you leverage and what values will you use to make Wasilla a better place for our citizens?
So I always like thinking outside the box on that type of situation where, uh, I remember a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about, uh, the rest, uh, the restroom being destroyed down at, I believe it was Bumpus, uh, ballpark. And, uh, I was thinking to myself, so what would I do differently to overcome something like that? And I also thought, well, maybe there's opportunity of growth of having possibly like a recession stand there that would help counter offset covering the costs of, um, keeping the bathrooms in good shape and also covering the costs of, uh, using the fields and stuff like this.
Thank you.
Ms. Rubio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Mark. Uh, my question, what motivated you to apply for the city council position?
What motivated me? So I have a good friend who said, uh, Mark, I think we need a good, strong, conservative, Christian man in there. Um, I think you would be the best person to, and I said, you know what? I didn't even realize the position was open. But I think you're right. I think I would thrive at this position. I believe with my skills and abilities of looking over budgets, um, and my ability to correct conditions and problems and come up with solutions, not just observing the problem that's out there, but actually coming up with a solution. Uh, I try to apply that principle in my work. When someone brings me a problem, before I take it up to the next level, I want to say, okay, here's the problem. I know what it is. Here's a couple of suggestions on a solution to the problem. And I think that would give me the benefit.
Thank you. Ms. Filo.
Hi, Mother.
Hi.
Can you share your experience working in group decision-making and how those skills would contribute to your role on the city council?
Oh, group decisions, yes. I, I love working in groups. I think with groups, uh, you get knowledge from every different aspect. Like you might have 10, 15 years' experience on one area and you the same, and even you guys over here, and we would all bring our thoughts together. And then collectively, we could come up with a solid plan of attack on the problems. And my experience, you said? Um, my experience is, uh, as running a service department, um, there's many a times, well, once a week, we have a managers meeting and discuss the ultimate goals. And we get together as a group there to discuss the solution of how we're going to execute such goals.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ms. Callan.
All right, Mark. There are times when the council and administration do not see eye to eye on funding or priority of city projects. How do you handle conflict, especially in a public setting like live-streamed council meetings?
Wow, that's a tough one. Okay, how do I resolve conflict? Um, so obviously, everybody's not going to see eye to eye on everything. And I think that's where it comes to, we got to take a bird's eye look at the whole thing and make sure what we're looking at is the best for the, the city. And if I think my goal and I look at what maybe your goal is, or your goal is, and I say, okay, overall, which one's going to be the best for the future direction of this city? And I think that would be the ultimate way to go, even if it's controversial to what my particular goal in that aspect is. Um, I'm very good at researching goals, though. And when I have something in mind, I want to explore every aspect of it. Like, uh, Ms. Rubio was saying, you know, what are our other options? Is this our only option? That's, that's me. That's saying, hey, have we really discovered every other option in here? And can we work out an agreement together? Like a man and a wife when they're married and you're always not going to get along with each other. But somewhere you meet in the middle to come up with the best solution.
Mr. Crafton.
Thank you. Uh, imagine you're the only member on the council who disagrees with a very popular proposal. How would you decide whether to stand alone or compromise? Walk us through your thought process.
You know, I, I feel very strongly about a lot of different things. And I feel like if it's the right thing to do, I, if, even if I have to stand alone, I don't feel like I'd be standing alone because I feel like I could collectively speak to each and every one of you and have you explain to me why I'm wrong and shoot holes in my plan and therefore either prove me wrong or in me, in you trying to do so, me proving to you that maybe you need to compromise toward my plan.
Okay, Mr. Graham.
Thank you. So, Mark, what are the three biggest priorities that you think the city council, council needs to address? And I'm not referring, of course, to specific projects like building a road or a park or, uh, but I'm talking about general categories. What would you say are the three biggest priorities, uh, that the city government can, uh, address at the council level?
The three biggest priorities, I would say keeping the city with its rules and stuff like that, a welcoming city for residents and businesses. A welcoming city for residents and businesses. Another priority, obviously, you said besides like the works package and projects and stuff like that?
Not including specific proposals, but in general, what would be the three biggest priorities you feel for the city?
Also, developing the city for children. The children basically are our future. And we got to make sure we keep the parks program going, the recs program going, and all the ball fields. As a kid growing up, that was the ultimate. I mean, I played T-ball, I played soccer, I played all the different sports. And I think that's what I feel the small town I grew up in rocked. I mean, that's what made the city. And I think that's got to be priority of what we do for the future. We got to build this city so we're welcoming business, we're welcoming the residents, and we welcome our kids. And that's attracting the rest of the...
Thank you.
Ms. Rubio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mark, are there specific projects or initiatives you would like to champion if selected?
Um, I had several ideas on a similar question. I'd have to say, I don't know if you guys all know what pickleball is, but it's like a... It is a really fun sport. And I think we just got a pickleball court set up at, is it Iditarod? Yeah, Iditarod Park. And I thought to myself, you know, Iditarod Park is a wonderful park for a lot of the children and stuff like that. But then when it comes to the wintertime, we don't take advantage of that park. I know we have the ice skating rink over the Menards Center. But I think we could purely do better for the wintertime at the parks, even possibly making the pickleball courts flooding it in the wintertime for ice skating and playing hockey, because I think the kids would really enjoy something like that.
Thank you.
Ms. Belak?
All righty. Mark, what is your vision for the city of Wasilla over the next five years?
Oh, I would really like to see the city gain some more land, maybe annexation of a little bit more area out there. I mean, we see so much growth, like down in Seward, Meridian. There's so much growth going on everywhere, and a lot of it's just outside the town. And I know everybody, I mean, not everybody, but most people love this little town. That's why this town, I think, grew just over thirty percent in the last five years. And I want to see it grow just a little bit out, as well as what we have right here, in the fact that, and keep it that small hometown feel that welcomes so many people with their families.
Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to enter into executive session for subjects that may tend to prejudice the reputation or character of any person, provided that a person may request a public discussion in accordance with Wasilla Municipal Code. Specifically, the executive session would be to discuss the application of Mark Schmidt for vacant city council seat C. Those present in executive session would be the members of the city council, the city clerk, and the city attorney.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt, do you request a public discussion? Or may the council enter executive session in the conference room to discuss your application?
Are you?
Do you want it out here, or do you want them to go into executive session?
Oh, out here's fine. I'm very transparent.
Madam Mayor, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Okay, council, it's all on you.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Graham?
So, Mark, number one, thanks for applying and thanks for taking notice that your skills and your experience could be of use by the council. I know this seems like a slam dunk, since you're the only one here. But, you know, you need, you know, four votes from the council to be able to move forward and to be appointed to the seat. So I will say that from what I have heard, I will support you for council seat C, I believe it is, that we're filling today. And I look forward to having, to adding someone onto the council with your business acumen. We have lost somebody with tremendous business acumen, so that would be great. I look forward to having someone with tremendous personal beliefs. We are losing someone who had tremendous personal beliefs. And I really look forward to someone who has family values, not just for himself, but for the community. So I thank you for applying, and you have my support. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I guess I could say a few things. I did enjoy your interview, and I appreciate you coming. And I think you would be an asset to this council, representing the city. I think you have a lot of good ideas, and I would vote for you to join us.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, Mr. Graham?
Madam Mayor, I move to appoint Mr. Mark Schmidt to the vacant city council seat.
Is there a second?
Rubio, seconds.
The motion has been made by Mr. Graham, sented by Ms. Rubio, to appoint Mark Schmidt to council seat C.
May I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Council, do you wish to also seat him this evening? Or do you wish to appoint tonight and seat at a different meeting? Is outlined in the AM?
It would be my intention to appoint him tonight and then seat him at the next regular meeting.
Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am. I approve my motion to be more clear.
Is that a clear, is that an injunction?
Okay. You want to do a roll call vote?
Madam Mayor, sorry. You should, there's discussion even after something like that, before, there's motion on the floor. Just to clarify here, does it have to be May 12th, or is it just within thirty days from today? I'm just curious, curiosity at this point.
Through the chair to council member Crafton. I think it has to be thirty days within appointment, and so it just seemed logical, next regular meeting. Is that correct, Attorney Wells?
That is correct.
And our next regular meeting would be outside, our next regular meeting after the 12th would be outside the thirty...
I understand.
That was pre-scheduling, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly that.
Okay, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is on the appointment of Mark Schmidt. The name right, I apologize. Yes, Mark Edward Schmidt, to council seat C, with, he will take his oath of office and be seated at the May 12th regular council meeting. Councilmember Cottle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Crafton?
Yes.
Councilmember Belak?
Yes.
Councilmember Rubio?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously, Madam Mayor, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Now you can go home, come on.
I'm going to have to take half of the budget with you, so you can study it.
We are now at communications. Madam Clerk, please read the item by title.
Thank you. Planning Commission meeting minutes, March 25th, 2025.
Okay, we are now at audience comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come and speak on any subject? Seeing nobody, I will close audience comments and bring it back to the dais. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just to remind council, I am leaving tonight, catching a flight to a conference in California. I'll be back Monday. So the office is left in the good hands of Deputy Clerk Sarah. I am available intermittently, so we'll be in touch. And so, yeah, have a good meeting tomorrow night. That's all I have.
Madam Attorney?
No comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rubio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great discussion tonight, and congratulations to Mark. I'm excited for you to be part of our team. And that is it.
Councilmember Cottle?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and congrats, Mark.
Thank you.
Good to have you on board with us. Just a couple of things with, we're basically honoring our clerks for Clerks Week. I just want to say with our Clerk's Office, they are the best far none. I have felt for a long time that the Clerk's Office is definitely the heartbeat of the city. They're a department everybody can go to, they're keepers of the records, they keep us all out of jail, which is a good thing nowadays. So I just want to express my gratitude to all of our clerks and our Clerk's Office. I do look forward to, as much as we didn't get Title 16 passed, I, myself, would like to have a little bit of discussion regarding our downtown overlay. So just please, everybody kind of keep that in mind and in your pocket for that meeting. And then the only other thing I have is, you know, when we're done with all this, I think we all need to plant a couple of trees, because we have killed a lot of trees doing all this, so that's it.
Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the staff for being here. I always feel bad for the chief, because he just kind of sits over there and doesn't get to say anything. We know you're there, chief, and we appreciate it. Also wanted to congratulate the clerks. You know, I know you don't get a whole lot of recognition, but having the Clerk's, municipal Clerk's Week, I think, is a great thing. Hopefully, you'll be able to, before you leave town, take your staff to lunch and enjoy a little bit of appreciation from the city. So also, Councilmember Cottle mentioned planting some trees. She did so in kind of a joking manner to make up for the 400-page packet that we had tonight, and I think 250 pages that we had last week. But the city of Wasilla, for many years, has made seedlings available. Eric, I think you and I talked about this last year. Last year, we missed the boat because of whatever reason, the seedlings just weren't available. And we kind of plant those to replace trees that have died and to make our city more beautiful. And given the fact that we have lost so many trees to the spruce bark beetle this year, and it's my understanding that the seedlings that are being provided this year are beetle-resistant seedlings, I highly encourage public works to look into that and come forward. Just give me a call, say, hey, I need this much money. Can you propose it? And I will stand forward and dance on the desk if that's what it takes to try and get that money. So Happy Earth Day to everyone. You know, I'm old enough to remember when Earth Day started, you know? And it was a big controversial thing. Can you believe that? You know, people were against picking up trash on the side of the road. But now we have, you know, we have a beautiful city. We have people and a community that's more responsive to keeping our city beautiful and keeping our environment in such a condition that we can pass it on to our children and grandchildren and have the nice parks and things that we have places to enjoy. So Happy Earth Day. I know it's not a big deal, but hopefully, as we clean up our city here in the next few weeks, we will think back and kind of think, hey, I saw some places where we could really use some trees that aren't in the railroad right away and aren't going to cause problems. And just because we give you seedlings doesn't mean you have to plant them on public property. You can plant them on your own property if that's what's needed, and kind of goes from there. Also want to thank those members of the public that participated in DEA Drug Takeback Day last Saturday. It was pretty successful. I don't know if we got an official pound number yet from DEA, but it was pretty successful. There was a good crowd there, people turning in stuff, getting medications off the street so that they cannot be misused, number one. And number two, so they don't go into our sewer system and then trickle down into the water and trickle into our lakes. So those of you who participated, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for being here today. Good night.
Councilmember Belak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, it was a great meeting. And you're right, with Title 16, we've, only complaints I ever heard from our constituents was landscaping. It was just a big deal. So it was kind of eye-opening tonight to hear about Mocha Moose's dilemmas. So I think we do need to take a look at other codes that maybe weren't focused on. And yes, congratulations to the clerks. They are the best. They are the best. And congratulations to Mark.
Thank you.
It'll be great having you on board.
Councilmember Crafton?
Thank you, Mayor. And Alina, I was definitely, thought I was going to get a scolding look when I was encouraging to postpone, because I know you and I have both been pushing to get this done. And it really is good to hear some feedback. I was telling Crystal, I sat down with the mayor and Crystal, and actually, our congressman's chief of staff this past week. And we were sharing with him what we were doing about Title 16. And later that day, we were actually in front of a business owner. And I swear he was verbatim saying what we've been saying, the difficulty of the businesses, the landscaping issues, the zoning issues, just everything up, down, left, and right. And his jaw about hit the floor, because he thought I had like staged it or something like that. It was so close to what we've been saying. So again, I really do want, I really wanted to be done with this, but I think we just need a little bit more time. And congratulations to Mark. Definitely make sure you get yourself a copy, because you realize that you now have to join us. Read it once, read it twice, maybe five times, and I think you might be on par with the rest of us here with how many times we've all been through it. So congratulations again. I will add as well, actually, Alina, myself, and Kathy have all been in that same seat going through this process. I actually lost to Alina, too. So I know how difficult it is. It's not easy to do, regardless of who else is still here. So I completely understand how nervous it was to sit through there. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to those turned out. And congratulations, clerks. We appreciate all you do. Jamie, you know how much we talk. You know how much I appreciate you. Same with Sarah, and apparently, Crystal abandoned us already. So make sure you say thank you to her, too. Thank you all, and we will see you tomorrow night.
Okay, congratulations, Mark. I look forward to your input. So I think you will be a good fit with the rest of these guys. Don't listen to things Stu's got to say. Anyway, and congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
You know, our clerks are the best. And we do appreciate you, even though sometimes you don't think so. We do. Also, thank you to the staff. I know it's a late night, so, but I truly appreciate everything you guys do, because without you, the city would not run. I don't care what the rest of them say. And with no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless an objection is raised. Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.